Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Curtis, Deputy Mayor Herbig, [0:01:08] Councilmember Shrubnik, Mayor Baker,
[0:01:11] Councilmember Danuski,
[0:01:13] Councilmember Smith,
[0:01:15] Councilmember Marshall.
If I can get you to please stand and join Councilmember Danuski in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. However, there's a proclamation, and I'd like to move the proclamation up to the front. If there are no objections, yes?
No objections to moving that up to the front, but a motion to move item B from the consent agenda to the act of agenda.
Okay, when we get there, you can pull it.
Okay.
Okay, so with the modification to the agenda, the agenda will stand approved as modified. So, first item on the agenda then is going to be a proclamation. And we're going to present this proclamation to Dr. Laura Stewart and Kenmore Pediatric Dentistry. But I understand there's people that want to speak also, which is just fine. But I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation into the record. Whereas the future is too large to measure independent upon the good health of our children and families. And whereas the city of Kenmore has a strong commitment to all our children in our community. And whereas good oral health is a vital part of a child's overall health. And whereas nearly 50% of school-aged children in our area currently have dental disease. And whereas good oral health contributes to better nutrition, improved ability to concentrate, and improved school attendance. And whereas the American Dental Association has observed February as National Children's Dental Health Month since 1949. And whereas the children of our community are being invited to participate in the 2018 Kids Give a Smile program and receive free preventive care at the University of Washington Center for Pediatric Dentistry on February 20th. Be it resolved that I, David Baker, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, thereby proclaim the month of February 2018 as Children's Dental Health Month in the city of Kenmore and urge all citizens and community organizations to join with the council in this observance. And all I can say is thank goodness for pediatric dentistry because I'm terrified of regular dentists, and I love those pediatric dentists. So, you want to speak? Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Wendy Dorr with the University of Washington Center for Pediatric Dentistry. And we do serve children from all over the state, including quite a number from Kenmore. So we are thrilled that you are supporting the children and families of your community in this way. Just so that you'll know, this year you're joining with the state of Washington, King, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties, and 20 other cities issuing these proclamations, encouraging families to take advantage of available pediatric care. You have wonderful care in your community. We have our clinic that serves all the special needs children and offers access to children who are enrolled in Medicaid and social services to help them enroll. So we hope you spread the word. Bartel Drugs has joined us and is paying for 50 kids to get a full exam, teeth cleaning, x-rays, and fluoride on February 20th at the clinic, which is at Magnuson Park. So thank you again for being so supportive of the families and children in your community.
And thank you very much. I know when I was a child growing up in LA, my mother couldn't afford much, and I took advantage of the dental school at the University of Southern California. Maybe that's where I got my bad memories of dentists from.
Well, it's a pleasure, so.
Thank you. So, Dr. Laura, if you want to come up, we'll present this to you. Our own Dr. Laura from Kenmore Pediatric Dentistry. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Mark.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Him, I'm not afraid of. All right. Next item on the agenda then is the presentation of the North Shore School District. The school levy and bond measures, and there's three measures to talk about. And so, is somebody here from the school? There you go. There you are, Dr. Reed. You were hiding back there. Work, this table's fine. Just push the buttons, the light's on. And we've got your PowerPoint ready to go.
So I've asked Ellen Lima, our Director of Technology, to join me this evening. And I think some of you have probably heard this presentation already. So I will move through it at a more adequate pace.
But do it justice so the people watching on television.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you giving us the time this evening. I know Ellen and I have been out in a lot of groups and really appreciate the time people are taking. And the questions people are asking about.
Our ballot initiatives. Thank you. I knew I'd have to adjust the technology. So anyhow, we do have three initiatives coming up. I want to share our district overview. And we are now at over 22,000 students, which for North Shore is a record. In fact, in the last year, year over year, we've grown by 700 students, which is the largest single growth year we've ever had in the history of the school district. 700 students is almost an entire, well, it is more than an entire elementary school, quite honestly. So that's really a great deal of growth. The other thing I'd ask you to contemplate is currently we have 94 home languages spoken in the district. So not only are we growing rapidly, we're also growing more rapidly diverse, which we're excited about. And it provides us opportunities to learn and grow together in ways we couldn't have foreseen years ago. So that's our background. We also want to share that we've done, last year we put together our strategic plan. Mayor, you, and several other members of the folks on the dais were part of that process. We had thousands of community members, staff, and students that identified five goals for the school district. Goal three, the growth for every student, is the one every school has to be responsive to this year. And then they got to choose another goal from the remaining four. All the kindergarten through eighth grade schools, except one, selected goal two, which is about creating community and resilient learners. And in large part because having middle schools for the first time, both the sixth and seventh graders were new to the building. So two-thirds of their student body was brand-new. So building community was pretty important. Our conference of high schools, an alternative high school chose goal five, Ready for Lifelong Success. So we're looking forward to that work rolling forward. We do have three initiatives on the ballot, February 13th. And my understanding is some of the ballots have already arrived. So February 13th, the day before February 14th, which is Valentine's Day. So we're excited that you have two events to celebrate that week. We have the renewal of the Education Programs and Operations Levy. And if you're somebody who follows semantics for many, many years, that was called the Maintenance and Operations Levy. With the McCleary decision, they've asked that we change the language on this to the Renewal of Educational Programs. Proposition two is the bond, and three is the renewal of the tech levy. We feel one of the things that makes North Shore special is that we do the things we say we're going to do. We opened this fall North Creek High School on time and on budget. And not all districts were able to do that, even with escalating construction costs. So we're very proud of the work we've done. We remodeled Woodinville High School, finished Phase III. And we improved access to computing devices. I also want to share that we thank you and other voters for your continued support. North Shore is one of the few districts that always passes their levies and bonds. And that makes up that gap about what the state provides and what we're able to do. And it enables our programs to be sustainable and predictable. So we really appreciate that, and thank you. So the money, funding for schools, this is a chart that basically shares that $1 in $5 comes from the local levy to support our general fund budget. 20% is raised from local levy monies out of our $245 million general fund budget. So to talk a little bit about the difference, one of the things that's exciting about North Shore is we have a very high percent of our eligible registered voters that actually register to vote, 84% in our school district. However, in 2014, only 29% of those actually voted, which we struggle with a little bit. So we really hope people take the time to be thoughtful about the issues and make sure they vote. So the distinction between levies and bonds. Levies are for learning, bonds are for building. And traditionally, we've talked about bonds as building buildings for growth as well as maintenance of roofs and so forth. I know our capital department would say we have over 3 million square feet of facility, 1.6 billion in assets. And $100 million of this particular bond is really for maintenance, roofs, HVAC systems, and so forth, which is not as much as they wanted. But we make that amount of money go a long way in North Shore. So we'll talk about each ballot measure, and there are three. Proposition one is the operations levy. Essentially, it's going to fund day-to-day operations. The gap in special education, the state has certain rules in the federal government about special education. However, there's still a $16 million a year shortfall in that that we make up with levy money. Transportation, we cover $2 million of costs that are not covered. We have yet to figure out a way to get our buses to fly because the mileage for buses and transportation is calculated by, as the crow flies, from schools to homes. We haven't worked on that yet. I've shared with Ellen, I think drone delivery might be soon if we just pick up certain, but I think we're going to wait a while on that. And then the basic education requirements that are not funded by the state. The state board, as you know, for this year's junior class and beyond requires 24 credits to graduate. And currently, we only require 21. So this will be the last senior class that walks with 21 credits. And the state funds .2 for every class, which means they're funding five classes. So our levy's already picked up a sixth class for all students, which times four years is 24 credits and has no room for error. So we're looking at how do we provide support for students who might fail a class or who might want to do international baccalaureate, as Inglemore High School has, and requires seven periods. So we'll be picking up two periods locally from levy money, which is a big issue I think the state has not yet wrestled with. So in looking at this, the $234 million is the cost. We would be going from $1.93 per thousand down to $1.82. And potentially, the $1.82 might actually only be $1.50 because since we're a district that asks for more than $1.50 today, that's the most the legislature said we could ask for going forward. However, some school districts get to ask 2,500 per student, which is Bellevue, is an example of such a district because they're already below the $1.50 per thousand. And you might ask, what's the distinction? I think Bellevue's homeowners are at about $0.99 per thousand, but it's because the overall district assessed valuation is so high. With Bellevue Square, Microsoft, other major businesses, they're able to keep that, the rate, lower because the assessed valuation is high. So what we've done is we've hoped that the legislature fixes that. And our OSPI superintendent has said that they intend to so that all districts could ask for the same, which would then be $1.82. If it doesn't get fixed, all we will collect is $1.50 per thousand. So the Capital Projects bond, primarily, we're looking at safety and security upgrades. I don't know how many of you have been keeping track, but I believe we have either 11 or 12, what is it, school shootings since this January?
11.
11 school shootings nationwide since January, since the New Year. And as we look at our school sites, one of the things we want to really upgrade, there's $13 million in this bond to upgrade access control, door locks, and safety features for our schools. We're looking at a new K-5 school at the Maltby Road site and 30 classrooms on Skyview Canyon Creek. We'll also be starting to touch Inglemore High School for the first time in many years, to put in a concert hall-type facility and instructional spaces, as well as work on the traffic flow. I know Principal Sherwood is, to the degree she's able today, doing hand springs for that one, right? I think those of us who've driven in the morning in that area, that'll be a welcome improvement. As well as then HVAC gutters, roofs, and florings. The overall $275 million total of this bond is, again, the tax rate currently is $1.78 per thousand for the current bond. Because the assessed valuation in our district has gone up, home values have gone up in four years, the tax rate actually has gone down. So it would be $1.59 a year per thousand. That being said, in all fairness, if your property value has gone up, even though the rate goes down, you likely will pay the same or could pay increased taxes. But from our local standpoint, we're really trying to minimize the rate. I also want to put in perspective, our bond is for $275 million. Federal Way passed a bond at $450 million. They're not much larger than we are and not growing as quickly. The Evergreen School District in Vancouver is putting a bond measure on that's over $600 million. So we're trying to stay at a reasonable cost that can be supported and predicted and stable in terms of a rate. So now the tech levy, and I'm going to ask Ellen to talk about the tech levy as he is our tech director. So Ellen?
Hi. Again, I'm Alan Mutem. I'm the tech director for the district. So we put together a citizens, staff group, student group back in like November to start looking at all the different possible tech projects that we might put together and ask the voters to help us support this year. And we're just going to highlight a couple of the big ones. The big one for us is moving to one-to-one computing across the district. North Shore is one of the last districts in this region that hasn't already gone to a one-to-one environment. We're at about three-to-one right now. And this would be just taking us to that final place. Now, when we say one-to-one, that doesn't mean that we're advocating all kids take a device home. We'd be working with the local parents, teachers, to see.
I don't know.
I think I'm on. We'd be working locally to figure out what's the model that works well for your environment. What I imagine you'll see would be secondary kids, like my son, who's a junior at Bothell High School, taking devices home so they can do their homework, their research, and things like that, kitchen table like, you know, everybody's kids do. But for the younger kids, it would be devices probably in the classroom that they would have access to. So as we talked to the teachers who were working with us on these projects, putting this proposal together, they said their biggest limitation of introducing technology in the classroom would be as they tried to figure out who gets the card of computers on different days. And when that moment of differentiation comes or inspiration with the kids, and it's not your day to have the computers, it's really an opportunity lost. And if you're familiar with how a classroom works, the moment kind of comes, and then it goes, and you don't have it back. So to be able to have your card of computers over at the side of the room and say, you know, here's a moment where we all need to grab our computers, and maybe these three kids need to, they can go get those computers and then move forward. So that'd be one-to-one computing. The other big issue with one-to-one computing would be an equity issue. So many of our kids are fortunate enough that they have high-speed internet and computers and things like that at home. But we do have a number of kids who don't have that opportunity at home. And learning and homework and research, things for them, it's very different than like my son's experience would be, to not have that high-speed internet at home. So similar to how other districts around us have done, we'd be looking at something like hotspots or other ways that we could bring high-speed internet to the houses of families where maybe they couldn't normally afford something like that. Other big proposals that we would have coming out would be assistive technology for some of our special education kids. I don't know if you've ever seen any of the work that you'll see with, like a kid with autism as they interact with some of the iPad or tablets or some interactive devices. It's really amazing stuff. And to be able to bring that to the classroom and help those kids out, it's a very exciting thing for us. We also have a lot of professional development in here. There's no point in pushing these new technologies into the classroom and trying to change that focus of the classroom if you're not going to train the teachers on how do you use these devices also. And then, of course, there's just the regular business of the district. We have to support that and keep those things moving forward also. So the proposal that we're putting out is $62 million over four years. So that currently, houses are paying about $0.30 per thousand of assessed value, or about $180 per year. And we'd be looking to move that up to just $0.48 per thousand or $288 a year to bring all that technology into kids' hands.
So overall, on the left, far left, is the current rate for all three measures that are currently in place, $4.01. And in the middle column, we've totaled $3.89. And again, that'll be $0.32 less if we actually only were able to ask for $1.50 per thousand. So we've actually kept our rate as low or lower than previously, or currently, I guess I should say. Just a reiteration and summary that the levy funds day-to-day operations. The tech levy funds technology specifically. And the bond actually builds the new classroom space and takes care of maintenance needs of a larger nature. So if you want more information, or if folks are watching, there's a space on our website where we can get more information. So I would be happy to take any questions that you might have, as would Ellen. But we appreciate the partnerships we have with the city and your unflagging support, so.
Questions? Councilmember Shrubnik.
I just have a couple. On the tech levy, can you talk a little bit about the implementation plan in terms of how you would work with households to either, I mean, is there eligibility? Would that be for long-term that they would get internet ability? I'm not sure how that, I'm curious how you're thinking about that. And then the other question is about the capital bond, but.
Yeah, so what we would need to do is do some kind of survey of households and find out the eligibility, right? There's Comcast, Verizon, different, our local internet service providers have programs where they could actually bring internet service into a house for a reduced rate. Or if we're talking about a household where even those reduced rates wouldn't be something they could afford, then the hotspot would be something that we would deliver to families. The actual criteria, how we would select it, I'm sure it would be based on some kind of eligibility criteria. We haven't worked all of that out yet. We'd be looking to some of our peer districts around us and try to mimic best practices on what they've been able to be successful with.
So there's models in other districts?
There's models in districts. Highline has been very successful, for example, and we've worked closely with them. Kent has a really good model that we could try to mimic as well. Yeah, we wouldn't be plowing any fresh ground on any of this kind of stuff.
Thanks. And then the other question was just about the bond measure. And in particular, I know Milton had the same question, but he's not here tonight. It's about the Inglemore, you know, orchestra space or performing arts. And just its kind of place within the rest of the performing arts facilities in the district, and particularly NPAC.
Sure. NPAC has a much larger, what they call, fly and stage area in the background. And we're not planning that level of, we're planning more seating and less fly. So it's going to be less for drama performances and more for music performances at Inglemore. The current theater at Inglemore is much smaller and has an inadequate, honestly, fly area to do plays. And so currently, our NPAC is used quite often. It's not, I know some people have indicated they've looked at the calendar page and haven't seen it utilized every night. Not all of the bookings appear on that calendar page. We also have a number of our feeder schools in the Kenmore area using Inglemore. An example would be Morelands. They don't have room on their campus as an elementary to have their school events, their whole school events. So they go to Inglemore, and then at times have been bumped from Inglemore because of student high school activities. So we're really excited about the possibility of having more of a music hall there that our other schools can use as well, which is different than the drama and the plays. The other thing, I know I've talked to our city manager, Rob Carlinzi, and said, you know, right now, a lot of our orchestra kids, band kids, they go to Seattle for youth orchestra or youth symphony. And it would be great if we could have a North Shore Youth Symphony and Youth Band. And this would be a facility that could house that. So we wouldn't have to, our kids wouldn't be headed into Seattle. It could be really a source of local pride. And we have a lot of musicians and just a lot of uses. We've been, I've also, we've talked to Lee Hall and our capital planning. There are many ways to do link-ups, like with NASA or link-ups with our underwater oceanic research and use it as a lecture hall during the school day so it's not just an evening venue. So we're really excited about it as a learning space. We don't really have one like that anywhere in the district, so. And then we're hoping in the 2022 bond, it will be 30 years since Inglemore has been remodeled or touched. So we're hoping to look at what we might plan forward from that with some type of modernization in mind.
Thanks.
That will be on the scale of the Bothell Performing Arts Center?
Yes.
It's different.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right. And I, yes. It's also, we've, you know, moving the ninth graders to the high school has really added a lot of kids to the different elective programs. And some of the classroom sizes, the ADA accessibility, have really been challenging, particularly at Inglemore. So it'll be, I think we're excited about that type of a learning space.
Before I forget, city clerk, Dr. Curtis is excused, correct? Yeah, mark him as excused, please. There is an emergency in the family. Yes?
Will there be room for any drama at all at Inglemore? What's going to happen to the drama department and its performance?
Their performance base in the tentative designs would stay the same as it is. It's just, doesn't have a lot of seating currently. But it would have to wait till a larger remodel of the school. We think that the facility we're going to build could be used for drama. It just wouldn't be at the scale with the, and I'm not a drama person, chemistry person. But there's a fly as the term. Are you a drama person?
I know drama people.
Okay. So you know drama people. So there's a fly or the types of things where sets can move around. It won't be as deep as that, but there'll be opportunity for spoken-word poets or other events, so, yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, thanks for, both of you for being here tonight. I appreciate you taking the time. And I just had a question on the improved traffic flow at Inglemore. Is that an onsite improvement, or is that something that is coordinated with the city for also off-site?
It's a great question. My understanding is it's an onsite improvement in terms of how the parking lots utilize and the additional, there'll be additional parking spaces. I think, if I recall, our Capital Projects folks have spoken with city folks about adding a different, or rerouting the entrance and egress of how you get in and out. Right now, there's a location, right, a driveway. And I think they're looking at creating another, I would say, entrance or egress for that. So the traffic should loop and move more smoothly.
Yes, Councilmember Marshall.
What then is the total tax impact on that $600,000 house for all three of the measures?
So let me go back to this slide right here. The total impact would be $3.89 per thousand. So if you multiply that times 600,000, that would be your tax impact.
I saw an earlier, where it was parceled out and it was actually gave some of those with the tolls.
Yeah, I can go back to those. Sure. You bet. So about $954 a year for the Capital Projects. Do you want to write these down, Ellen? And try to remember them as I go. About $1,000 for the levy, so.
$1,954?
$1,954. And then the tech is about?
$2.88.
$2.88, so.
Oh, this is some high-pressure math I'm doing here now. So about $2,250?
A year.
Yeah, which is, which is down from what it.
Has been.
Yeah, for rate.
Yeah. That was without a calculator?
I used to teach math.
So, looking at that for assessed valuation, any idea what the McCleary, what the government did with the McCleary decision, because that can affect our property tax rate?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question.
The North Shore School System is going to be hit fairly hard.
Yeah, great question. The McCleary decision, we're still waiting for some kind of, even, I'm not even saying final word, but some predictable word on what it actually will mean for us, both as a tax and what we would then receive back from the tax. McCleary is increasing property taxes for 2018, I believe it is, but then, there's some redistribution of that money around the state. And we have not been notified what the increase specifically will be or the distribution of our local state tax. So, we're really kind of, I'm not sure we're able to talk much about it because I don't know that we have the right answers for that. I don't think we've ever talked about the state part of property taxes, yeah.
We're going to find out here in a couple of weeks, so...
That'll be great.
I think one of the interesting things to note about the McCleary decision is, we sit here in the land of Microsoft and Google and Amazon and Elon Musk, SpaceX and biotech, all have homes within North Shore School District, and the state still does not consider technology or instructional technology to be part of basic education. Even in the McCleary decision, there is no targeted instructional technology dollars. If we're going to bring that, they still have left that local, which, to me, is an amazing decision.
Well, and McCleary also hasn't, doesn't touch your bond discussion, so it's not able to be used for funding buildings or additional classroom space, so, we'll see.
Any other questions? Here you go. Thank you. So, I guess the question before us, then, is to adopt or not Resolution Number 18-038, which is in support of the North Shore bond issue. Yeah? I think this is all the same.
This is a common resolution.
Let me check on the agenda to see where that comes back, then.
No, this is in the business.
Right, but it's not anywhere else on the agenda.
It's in...
Okay, I see where you're at.
See what he's doing.
All right, so we're going to open up Citizen Comments on the Resolution 18-038, supporting the North Shore School District, Number 417, Proposition I-3. Has anybody signed up?
Janet Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor Baker and council members. I am wearing my Citizens for North Shore Schools hat tonight, and I just want to say thank you so much for your support. It's really great to see how the school district and the city work together, and it's great to see the relationship that exists between you, so thank you again for your support. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I have two other people signed up, and I'm not sure if it's about this resolution, Karina O'Malley or Linda DeBolt. Is it about the school bond measure? No? Okay. Nobody else?
Anybody else wishing to be heard on the school bond measure? Anybody else wishing to be heard on the school bond measure? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll declare the comment period closed. So, now, then, I think it's before us to...
Not quite.
Not quite? Where, where are we going? Okay, so, we can either support or not. We've supported this traditionally in the past, all of these measures that have been on the ballot before. And in doing so, as required by RCW 42.17A.555, the council must allow opponents and supporters of the proposed resolution ballot propositions an approximately equal opportunity to express their views on that resolution ballot propositions. This opportunity is not an official public hearing, but a call for comments on the proposed resolution ballot propositions. So, we will allow for comment from both opponents and proponents of the, of the measure. But right now, what's before us is the chair will accept a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-308, with all the wherethes and heretofores. We are supporting the following three propositions that North Shore School District has placed before the voters on the February 13, 2018, special election. Clarification, we are not, we are supporting this being on the ballot, right?
That is correct.
Okay, we are not saying vote yes on this. We are saying we support this being on the ballot.
That's correct. As a body, you have indicated support for the proposed ballots. Correct.
All right, so with that clarification, is there a motion, then, to adopt Resolution Number 18-308?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Let's do the official way. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
So, the motion stands approved, Jan Madsley, 6-0. All right. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
All right, now, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express views on issues that are important to you in the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be a timer up on the screen, and we're not going to bang gavels and go nuts if you go over the three minutes, but we ask you to try to, try to keep it in three minutes.
Karina O'Malley.
Hello, Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Karina O'Malley, and I am a board member of the Sophia Way. We serve women who are experiencing homelessness all over the East Side. Several of Sophia Way clients have been living here in Kenmore with a project-based Section 8 voucher for many, many years and have really enjoyed your lovely city. I am here tonight to thank you for your years and years of support for Arch projects, and I am grateful for your considering of the current Arch budget and work program. One of the projects that they have recommended is the CCS Family and Woman Shelter, which will ensure that every woman and every person with a child anywhere on the East Side will have one place where they know they can go and get services that they need to exit homelessness. The day centers, the night shelters, the case management, the connection, the community, the safety, and the home that they so desperately need to exit homelessness. On a cold and rainy night like tonight, it is a wondrous vision that the most vulnerable in our community will not be standing in the rain at a bus stop, transferring bus to bus from the day center to the night shelter to somewhere else to maybe nowhere. Instead, there will be one place that you will help build for all of these folks to be able to come in. You'll be creating a lighthouse and a safe refuge from the storm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley.
Linda DeBolt.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. My name is Linda DeBolt. I'm a resident of the City of Kirkland and also the chairperson for the New Bethlehem Project, which is a coalition of four faith-based partner organizations, including Holy Family Catholic Church in Kirkland, St. Louis Catholic Church in Bellevue, Catholic Community Services of Western Washington, and Salt House Lutheran Church in Kirkland. On behalf of the New Bethlehem Project Steering Committee, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of Resolution Number 18-307, authorizing the funding recommendations from the Arch Executive Board and allocating capital funds for the Catholic Community Services and Sophia Way Kirkland Shelter for Homeless Families and Adult Women. I'd like to give you just a thumbnail sketch about the New Bethlehem Project's involvement in this permanent shelter project. We started back in mid-2015 and developed as a group of volunteers who had a mission of helping to meet the urgent need for a year-round, 24/7 emergency shelter for homeless families and on the East Side. Over the next year, New Bethlehem tapped into the generous contributions of Holy Family and St. Louis communities, plus other faith organizations and the local community. In 2016, we raised over $500,000 to fund the first two phases of a three-phase project. These phases included the Temporary Day Center for Families, which opened in November of 2016, and this provides a warm, safe place for families who are experiencing homelessness to stay during the day with essential services such as meals, showers, laundry, computer access, and social services. The New Bethlehem Project Day Center has been a huge success through the hard work of Catholic Community Services professional staff and the many great volunteers who bring meals and help in many ways with daily operations. To date, 700 individuals have been served at the day center, including 276 children. 124 people have gone into permanent housing, and 35 people have obtained employment. Last year, we funded expanding the existing overnight East Side Emergency Winter Shelter, which operates in rotating churches to stay open an additional six months. And then, finally, we are working to create a full-time emergency, 24/7 emergency shelter as a holistic way to address the needs of families and adult women experiencing homelessness in one permanent location. So, this is the project that we very much are requesting your support in approving the resolution before you tonight to help fund this project, and the New Bethlehem Project will be kicking off a capital campaign starting next month to raise approximately $1 million towards this project as well. Thank you very much in advance for your support.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeBolt.
Dan Landis?
Hello, Mayor, city council members. My name is Dan Landis, and I'm from King County Housing Authority, and I'm here to support Resolution 18-307. As I'm sure you all know, rents have been escalating rapidly for many years now, and we've reached the point where many people who work in our communities can't afford to live in our communities. Just in this last year, we've seen investors from around the country pay crazy prices for existing apartment communities, including apartment communities near here and developable This makes it very difficult to count on the market rate housing for affordable housing opportunities as we move forward. And it's not just the existing rents that are driving these prices, but their belief that rents are going to continue to go up in this area. For those of us who are concerned about affordable housing, the only way that we can make it happen is when cities like the City of Kenmore step forward and put money into preserving and creating new housing opportunities. And I want to thank you all for a long history of doing that, and I'm really appreciative of the work of Arch. I'm especially appreciative this year as we have two projects on the list. One of them will preserve some existing units in the City of Kirkland, and will also, we're also hopeful of getting Arch money to allow us to build 155 new units of affordable family housing in Central Issaquah as part of a mixed-income, mixed-use, transit-oriented community adjacent to the Issaquah Transit Center. The support of cities like Kenmore is vital in enabling us to move forward with these and, and helping provide some workforce housing for those who otherwise can't afford it. So, thank you very much, and I urge your support for this Arch funding.
Thank you, Ms. Landis.
Phyllis Finley?
I want to dovetail on Resolution 18-308, but I'm not specifically talking about whether you should adopt it or not adopt it, so I wasn't sure if I should speak then or now, so here I am.
Ms. Finley, if I can have you state your name?
Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. As you know, the Capital Project bond of $275 million specifically earmarks outdoor instructional space such as playfields, tennis courts, and athletics. As you know, the City of Kenmore has been awarded a 600,000-plus grant, and as you are aware, the spending of the grant money is flexible. There is not a provision in the grant that dictates that it must be spent at St. Edward State Park. I'm requesting that you go beyond the adoption of Resolution 18-308, and I'm requesting that you direct city staff to work cooperatively with the North Shore School District in order to use this grant money to upgrade their school fields in and around Kenmore. This is another opportunity for us, Kenmore, to put our money where our mouth is, not just give lip service and pass a resolution, but actually support the North Shore School District in a very concrete way. This is a way to benefit all of North Shore School children, not just a very small, select group of children that choose to join a club. In addition, a specific provision in the Youth Athletic Facilities Program allows cities to partner with school districts to apply for and receive grant funds for development of youth sports fields on school property. Repeat, underline, on school property. I request that the city apply for such a grant, that we actually partner with the school district in this way. Again, that we do more than give lip service to supporting the school district. I encourage you to apply for another grant. I think the grant, it opens this week or very, in the very near future, so I would request that you pursue applying for another grant that partners with the school district to upgrade their fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
You're welcome.
There's nobody else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Ms. O'Malley and Ms. DeBolt. Yeah, I don't know, this is just sort of shaking out all of the communities, a number of the communities on the East Side are certainly, are sort of trying to help a particular niche. I know that Kirkland is, is doing women and children. Bellevue is doing men, and I think Redmond is doing families or some combination thereof. And we have chosen to use Mary's Place in our community. So, all of us are taking a segment of the homeless population as much as we can in our communities, and so it's good that you've come here. We've been a contributor to Arch for a number of years, and I, I certainly hope that we stay that way. And I think that, I thank you for being here tonight and for the programs you're associated Ms. Finley, thank you very much for your comments. I'm sure the city manager will look into that. All right, with that, then, the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, and we have Councilmember Marshall that wants to pull Item B and deal with that separately. So, then, if we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A and C only.
Moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, been moved and seconded.
Who was the first on that? That Joe?
I think Councilmember Danuski, Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Danuski. All right, then, if we can, all of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, minus Item B, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. All right.
Mayor, is your microphone on? They're having trouble hearing you in the back. It is?
It is on, yes.
Could you get it a little closer to you, maybe?
Yep, we'll do that. So, then, let's go ahead and deal with Item B. Ordinance Number 18-0455, amending Section 17.25.030 of the Kenmore Municipal Code relating to final plat approval. So, Councilmember Marshall, what is the, what is it that you're wanting to know? So, Councilmember Marshall, what is the, what is it that you're wanting to know?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear the presentation, or a brief presentation, from Mr. Hampson, and with the idea that I'm concerned about the impact upon the public process and the lack of transparency that I believe this contemplated change, taking it away from the council's decision and delegating the authority to the department, would bring. So, I'd like to hear the rationale and open it for discussion, and then, or ask questions regarding that, maybe there's more that I do need to know, and then hear the discussion and address it.
Mr. Hampson?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So, the ordinance before you tonight is to, I'm going to read a little bit from the agenda because it really speaks for itself on that matter. So, currently, we have two different processes for long plats and short plats, and we define long plats as any plats that are greater than, that are 10 or more, we call those a long plat. Anything less than 10 is considered a short plat. Our short plat process currently allows us to do administrative approval at the final short plat process, and our long plat final process currently requires us to bring something to council, and we usually put it on consent. We've never had one get pulled, and you basically have to approve it. It's administrative, I wouldn't say it's administrative approval, it's your council approval, but at that time, it's pretty much a done deal. The preliminary approval has been done for the long plat. The improvements have been put in, and so that time, it's just coming to you to finalize the process and do it that way. So, the public process isn't getting jeopardized. We still have that earlier-on public hearing that occurs during the preliminary point where it's most important to get the public comment and input, and so that gets into the design, and so that has to do with all kinds of zoning issues, environmental issues, or traffic issues, or any of those other concerns get addressed up front. So, this ordinance isn't changing any of those processes, including the ability to appeal the project even after it has been signed on the dotted line.
I mean, this has been, about every council member that's been through here has complained about this, but it's a simple fact that by the time it comes to us for approval, they've met all the requirements.
They've met all the requirements.
They've done everything that they need to do, and we really don't have a choice because they've met all the requirements. The only choice we have at that point is to approve.
Correct.
Deputy Mayor?
So, theoretically, if we decided, you know, if we, a plat came before us, if our plat came before us, and we voted to not accept the plat, what would happen? Just purely theoretically here.
So, I could actually help you to answer that question. So, when a final plat comes to this body, or whoever may be delegated the authority to approve, state law is very clear, if a final plat meets all the requirements of your code and state law, it is essentially a ministerial duty. There's no discretion to deny it unless there's findings that those weren't met, findings that either the final, the preliminary plat approval, local law or state law, are not met, and that would be when we work with you to flesh out what wasn't met and then send it back for compliance.
So, we'd be opening ourselves up to a lawsuit, potentially?
If they meet all the criteria, it should be a ministerial act of approval, meaning no discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
But currently, Mr. Hampson, there's an opportunity for the public to comment at the council meetings even when it's on the consent agenda, isn't there?
That's correct. It's just put on the consent agenda at a regular council meeting, and there's always that opportunity to have the public comment period.
Right, there could be that, well, it's published beforehand, made available to the public that there, before the council, there's going to be this item on the consent, and then they can speak about it. So, that's an extra, or a public or final level of input for the public, isn't it?
Sure, it could be considered that.
Okay. So, in that sense, it wouldn't be accurate to say that the process would not be changed. Those would be done away with, and it would just be left up to the authority of the department.
Well, I think before anything gets approved on a plat, there's always the ability for anybody to come and give a public comment during any council member if they aren't happy with the department's decision or the city's decision.
Right, and one more question. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily come to a council member's attention in the same way. It wouldn't be on the consent agenda, and so unless you had a personal interest or a constituent brought it to your attention, it wouldn't be coming to your attention as a council member in the same way.
Right.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes.
So, you ready to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion that we disapprove this proposal, and the reason is, is that it's going to take away public input at the final part of the process, which, though it's been referred to as ministerial and it's already been approved, nevertheless, citizens can have public input on it. And I think that's important when we're talking about development in our community and the impact that these developments have on neighborhoods, have on traffic. I always think it's important to have public input and have the project thoroughly reviewed and thoroughly brought to the community's attention.
There's a whole process through the life of that approval where comment can be given, correct?
There is, correct.
And there is the chance during that process, from the beginning to before it comes to us, for an appeal to be filed and be heard by a hearing examiner.
There's, so, if after it came to you, it's appealable, so it wouldn't be appealable to the hearing. The preliminary, excuse me, final plats are type III decisions, so there are recommendations from the department to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner makes the final determination on the preliminary part. The final plat is the council's approval, so any kind of appeal from the council's approval would be to court.
Okay, I'm thinking about the process from the end and how much.
You're thinking about the preliminary approval.
Yeah, how much process, how much opportunity there is for the public to appeal that process anywhere along the way, because I know what happened with a short plat around our house. But anyway, fine, okay. So, you want to state your motion, please, in like a sentence?
I would move to deny the proposed change to, in Item B. Move to deny Item B from the consent agenda and leave the process as is.
So, not to approve the final plat, is that correct?
On, regarding Item B, yeah.
Yes, that's Item B, right? Item B is to, ordinance amending the section, so you don't want to amend the section on the final plat approval, is that correct?
That's it.
All right, so we have a motion to deny amendment of Section 17.250.030 of the Kenmore Municipal Code. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All right, so, we have a motion before us to deny the approval of Ordinance Number 18-0455, Section 17.25.030 of the Kenmore Municipal Code relating to final plat approval. Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
We're not doing any discussion?
No.
Yeah, we can do discussion. Thought we had discussed it, but let's do discussion. Deputy Mayor Herbig?
To be honest, I could go either way on this, and I don't think, the reason why this bill was passed in Olympia was because there are much smaller communities that meet on a much less regular basis than we do, and having to have every plat go through the council was creating some serious buildup and backups for developers. I also don't ever see us denying one based on advice from council, but I, they've never taken up any time at our council meetings. They've never been anything that's gotten particularly controversial. So, I can go either way on this. I recognize Councilmember Marshall's point about an additional place for somebody if there is something alarming happening or something out of the ordinary to come in and address council, and I don't have any objection to that. We've never, having these on the consent agenda has never caused an issue one way or the other, so I can go either way, and Councilmember Marshall is passionate about this, so I'll be supporting his motion.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Shrubnik?
I just have a quick question. Do you have a sense, I mean, I don't know if this statistic is about Kenmore, the delay that the current process is imposing on the approval process?
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Well, what kind of delay does our current process of bringing it to a consent agenda cause in the overall approval process? How many weeks? Is that, is it three to four weeks? Is that our statistic, or is that?
So, we had a recent plat that was on the first council meeting agenda for this year. I think it was January 16th or so, it was the first Tuesday of the council meeting, and that developer was ready to go a couple months in advance, but of course, we didn't meet in December, so we delayed that project, you know, a good seven, six or seven weeks.
Councilmember Marshall?
So, I do view this as, and I think it's uncontroverted, that at least one public input and a very fundamental public input will be taken away if the new process were to be approved, and that is the publication of the item in the, at least the consent agenda, the public having the opportunity to see that, and maybe they're late, maybe they haven't weighed in before for various and sundry reasons, but they then have an opportunity to speak. There is an opportunity to speak that would be taken away and delegated to the department. I think that as the council, where they're most visible, most publicly, or public institution as part of the city's governance and projects of this impact properly brought before us, and I think it's important to err on the side of public participation and transparency rather than the speed with which permits can be developed. I think those things have to be balanced. I think our existing system has a good balance, and as Councilmember Herbig noted, this seemed to be more of a problem or a issue for other communities and not Kenmore.
Mr. Hampson, I think we've had these final plat approvals come before us before as something that was on the agenda that we voted on independently. Is there any objection to leaving it that way so that it's on the agenda and somebody can speak to it?
I guess I'm not following the question. Rod, do you have an answer?
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have a super-strong opinion about this either. This was a change in state law that made it possible for us to be a little more efficient and save the staff time of having to produce an agenda bill and bring it forward for council approval. So, but it's not a ton of work. It's not going to save us a ton of time, so if you want to keep the process the same, you can. We were just trying to take advantage of the new state law for efficiency's sake, but if you want to err on the side of public process, you most certainly can. One thing I do want to point out, if at final plat time, somebody did want to make a comment, their comment would really only be legitimate if they disagreed with staff's assessment that they have met all of the requirements. If they want to question the project and say the project shouldn't happen, or not enough mitigation, or whatever, that's too late because that's done at preliminary plat. So, any public input could only have weight if it were questioning whether staff's assessment that they made met all the conditions was true.
Thanks, and if I could follow up a little bit, it does take a lot of, a little bit more work to put these together, and typically, when we have these on the consent agenda, the project manager who's in charge of the project at the time will come to the council meetings, of course, so they have to take some time out of their night, but thank you for that clarification because he's absolutely correct. The stuff that, you know, is approved through the preliminary process has already been put into place. The infrastructure has already been built, you know, they've already posted their financial guarantees, and we're going through checking the boxes to make sure that they've met all the conditions at the preliminary approval.
Right, I mean, it's always been, when that's come before us for final plat approval, they've checked all the boxes, everything is fine, and we've been told many times, the only thing we can really do is approve it because they have met all current code.
Yeah, and if I could point out, I mean, when you get to final plat, physical improvements are in the ground. So, the roads are built, the utilities are in, the sidewalks are in, the houses are ready to get built. So, again, it's not a time to say, "I don't think this project should happen." That's, their time to do that was during preliminary plat.
So, the only input that they would have at that point is if there was something wrong with the compliance to code.
And, yeah, the conditions of the plat, yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
So, maybe a question for the city attorney. Is this, are these platting decisions, are these quasi-judicial, then?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Councilmember Smith?
So, Brian, can you tell me, how many times would a typical long plat, for instance, come in front of us in any normal process?
If we were to adopt this ordinance as written, how many times would the final plat come before the city council?
Right.
It wouldn't come before the city council.
That's what I assumed. Okay, so, for that reason alone, I actually find it, I actually find it interesting to read it, because oftentimes, you see plats, I mean, I know a lot of them because of my work, but there are things you see going on, and actually, I enjoy seeing the final plat in here on the consent agenda because oftentimes, it answers questions that weren't really even questions, they were more curiosities than they were questions. So, if it isn't that much more staff time, I can honestly say I wouldn't, I mean, I'm always pretty much in favor of anything that makes us more efficient and lean as an organization, but I think if this is the only place that the typical citizen would even see it, because if we only see it once right now, then clearly, most everybody else would only see it if they're actually reviewing the agenda items. So, for that reason, I will probably support it, support the current process.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I just want to make sure I understood correctly. I mean, maybe we don't see the final plat, but it sounds like we do, there is an opportunity for a full hearing at the preliminary plat stage. Is that what I think I heard?
Well, there's a full public hearing, but the public hearing is before the hearing examiner for the long plats. The short plats are administrative.
So, the city council doesn't hear it at all?
Doesn't have input on long plats.
The public does.
Right.
And actually, once you see that sign go up, you can comment and say, "Hey, what's this doing here? This is not going to work." City Manager?
Brian, how many of these per year do you project in the future come into the council if council does not change the code?
It's less now that we increased the number of lots for long plats. I'm pulling a number out of my head, we probably see a range of 10, an average of 10 a year. Yeah, maybe eight to 10 a year.
That number's got to be going down. So, that much buildable land left?
Well, we're going to see, we're going to see larger, large, larger long plats go down, the numbers of that, you know, we'll see a lot more, or continue to see plats of the size from 20 lots and under.
So, we're, being a small community, we're not running out of buildable land?
Well, we have a lot of buildable land, a lot of it's infill, a lot of it's going to be tear downs and putting together parcels to put together a larger plat. Now, what we don't have is the larger pieces of property that are vacant that developers can build, you know, 60 to 80 lots on anymore.
All right. Any other questions? So, the issue before us then is to deny approval of Ordinance Number 18-0455, amending Section 17.25.030 of the Kenmore Municipal Code and establish the effective date. So, there's no more discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Approved.
As is unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a business agenda resolution number 18 dash 307, authorizing the duly appointed administrating agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter into an agreement for the funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board utilizing funds from the city's housing trust fund. Mrs. Owsley, before we get going, could we get a one or two paragraph comment from, because we've got a couple of new council members here, of what Arch does and why we're investing money in Issaquah and Kirkland?
Certainly. First of all, I'd like to welcome Arthur Sullivan, who is the executive director of Arch. And this is a, an organization created by interlocal agreement of 15 municipalities and King County that was formed, and I'm going to ask again, of what year?
92.
1992, to combine resources to fund affordable housing projects on the east side. I represent the city manager on the executive board of Arch, and the number of projects that have been funded through the housing trust fund, there's a list of them in this agenda packet. Each city contributes money from their own funds into the housing trust fund that Arch administers. And so, what we're going to be talking about tonight are four projects that have been recommended by the executive board, that Kenmore, using the funds that have already been deposited in the housing trust fund, those funds would go toward funding a total of about, almost 300 housing units, affordable housing units, that are in transit oriented development areas. And I think this is kind of notable about the number of units and the fact that we're seeing these opportunities come up in, in areas that are going to be well served by transit. In addition to that, over 100 shelter beds would be funded by the, by these projects that are before you tonight. Also want to say that it's typical that Arch provides sort of a informational session for elected officials, particularly newer elected officials. It's called the Housing 101 opportunity, and I believe that has been scheduled, and so we can, we can also talk about that. This particular proposal for the, for the resolution would use over $100,000 of the city's funds that have been in the housing trust fund for, for some period of time. There would still be some money that would be left, and this also anticipates a smaller amount in 2018 funds, but again, there would still be a balance left of Kenmore funds in the housing trust fund. So, Mayor, is there any other information that you want us to cover before we start talking about?
No, I just wanted to make sure they understood that we contribute to a fund, but we've benefited for the fund, and we continue to contribute, and if we have a project, Arch is right there to get funding.
Absolutely.
The other communities to help get this built.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good to see you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
And Arthur will, will, I'm sure, cover the fact that a very active citizen advisory board that is appointed by the executive board, reviews all the project proposals that come before it, and then makes recommendation to the executive board.
Thank you. So, just to give a little more of the big picture context in your packet, to your point, Mayor, on pages 147 and 148, is a historic list of what has been funded through the Arch Trust Fund process. We're at 3,300 units to date, serving families, seniors, homeless, and persons with special needs. We have long-term goals. Our goal over time, again, as the mayor indicated, is while in individual years, cities share their resources to help projects where their best opportunities are, the goal is over time to have affordable housing created throughout the Arch area and all the cities within East King County, and there have been some projects in the past that have been located in Kenmore. The idea here is, as you can see from some of the projects that we'll have this round, individual cities would not be able to undertake some of the scale projects that you see in front of you tonight. So, by joining together, we're able to do large-scale type developments, which is becoming even more prominent over time, as we're seeing more of our growth in centers in which very small parcels have very large number of units and are complex projects. So, what we provide to you in the materials is, on page 141 of your packet, is a memorandum from the executive board, which has a written description of each project. It also has the rationale that the advisory board and the executive board came up with for making their proposal. And then it also has a number of conditions that we are recommending be linked to the making those funds available. So, those conditions need to be met in order for funds to actually be utilized. So, if a project, we don't just spend our money because you've allocated, we want to make sure that a project is going forward, and all the other funding that is being proposed, et cetera, is happening. There are several summary charts that are included in the packet, and I would probably turn your attention there, because that's where it is easier to sort of understand the range of projects. On page 141, there are descriptions of four of the five projects. One is, you heard from two of the applicants tonight, one is for the Catholic Community Services and Sophia's Way to do a shelter, and the only correction I would make to the mayor's memory is that in Redmond, they are providing help homeless services for young adults in their facility. But otherwise, your memory is right on mark. And so, this is to do the facility in Kirkland. City of Kirkland has been very active on this project, and their council's been very active. So, this is to have up to 100 beds split between women, and then, there's two separate parts of the building, and then for families with children. It is a project that's been being worked on for several years, initiated by some conversations by the Arch membership of how to create long-term stability for facilities for homeless shelter type facilities. The second project is located, actually doesn't have a location, it's proposed to be a group home by a group serving single homeless men. They've been operating these types of facility group homes for over 10 years in several cities in East King County. It's called Congrations for the Homeless. These are group homes with up to six individual men, and they live in a group setting. And they've been doing this, but they've been doing it with leased homes, and lease prices are going up, and again, they're trying to create a more stable environment. They originally proposed us to support them with three homes. We are recommending only one home at this point, see how it works, because there are issues from going to ownership versus a rental model. So, we thought the best thing to do, also because of the other demands for funding this round, why don't we support them doing one project, one home? But this is a model that they have had extensive experience doing, and I think they have six or seven other homes where they've been doing a lease model. The third project is Imagine Housing Estera Project, located in, many of you know where the old group health hospital in Overlake used to be, if you know the region well, but it's right just south of the Microsoft campus. This is a development that is being master planned with over 3,000 units, and the idea here is to buy one parcel, it's only a couple acres in size, yet is zoned to allow over 200 units. The proposal, to show you the sophistication, is a single podium with structured parking, with one part of the podium being built with market rate housing by a local developer, and the other half being built by Imagine Housing, who you've worked with on a number of occasions on a number of other projects. They just had a groundbreaking last month for a property in Bellevue. This would be a project that would have affordability, their portion would have 130 units, which would include units for homeless individuals and families with affordability from 30% of median up to 60% of median. The market rate project would also have a few affordable units in it as well. So, this is a very large-scale development, very complex project, and they are also used in a second. And the last one, you heard from the housing authority, we have the only, one of them listed on here, the other one is being fully funded by the city of Kirkland with some in-lu fees they've received. But the other one is a new, a new construction project, again, very similar, single podium, 200 units of market rate housing, and 150 units of family housing, studios, the two bedrooms, affordable at some of the units at 40% of median, and the balance at 60% of median. Both of the two facilities, I just, larger ones, one will be within two blocks of the New Light Rail Station in Overlake, and the other one is immediately adjacent to the city's central Issaquah Trantage Center. So, these are properties that are very well located for trantage services. Now, what I would also point out for new members and existing, is that the next chart that we have as a summary includes all the other funding sources. And there are two things of note when you look at this leveraging chart, it's called for this coming round. The first is that some of the cities are putting in additional resources of local resources in addition to what is being funneled through the housing trust fund. City of Issaquah is waiving $2.5 million of impact fees for the proposed housing authority project. The city of Redmond is using in-lu fees from a project of $4 million to supplement the other money through the trust fund. Kirkland is looking at the REIT fund, which is allowed under new state legislation, as well as proceeds from a land sale in addition to the general fund. So, the total contributions for these projects of city funds through the trust fund is just over $4 million, which is a scale that is significantly higher than we've done in the past. But we've managed to have the funds because we've had some repayments, we had some projects not fully utilize the funds that you allocated previously, there had some cost savings. And then finally, and so the total contributions from cities is over $15 million. That's a significantly high contribution of cities. The total cost, though, for these projects is $125 million. So, we are still only 15% of money. The rest is coming from public fund sources and a number of private fund sources. You heard how the shelter will be doing a capital campaign. So, this is around, quite unlike anything we've seen for four or five years, or longer. To get 300, and actually, if you do beds, 350 beds and/or housing units, the past five or so years, we've been around 100 units a year. So, this is a significant difference. The result of that is there's a number of conditions that are listed that I'm not going to go through in detail, but there are a number of special conditions. The executive board took two full meetings to work through the various conditions. We are in a high-cost construction cost period, we have construction contingency, portions of some of the awards which still require another review by the executive board to make sure they're fully needed. We are dealing with the state capital budget issue, that we are proposing spending potentially some amount of this 18 money, spelled out as mentioned by deputy city manager, Assistant City Manager Owsley, because we had to have a fully funded project in order to get the tax credits, which is the most significant funding share for two of the projects that we have. But this is specifically for Estera. We're hoping that with the capital budget, we may not need that. But, so this has been around, there are a number of conditions in here, if you want me to describe any of this special, I can. But as I said, the process involves first a review by a citizens committee who meets for several meetings, and then the executive board, who consists of chief administrators from all the member organizations, and so that's sort of the culmination of this material. So, a more complex round than we've experienced, I think, in, maybe not my full tenure, because that goes back 25 years, but it is definitely one of the most complex rounds we've ever had. So, if you have questions, that's, we're here to help answer those, because there are a number of complexities to this round.
Questions? And then Deputy Mayor, go ahead, Councilmember Smith. I saw you.
Hey. Thanks, Arthur, for being here again and updating us. I have a question on, one of the things that jumps out when you look at the, the different projects in the summary, and it's the, the trailhead one at 430,000 a unit.
Right.
And it just seems unbelievable that, and I realize part of it is because it's right in the center of the TOD in Issaquah, but I'm wondering if, if it ever is, or how much thought goes into, can we maybe move it a little ways out of
Right.
prime, prime land to be able to double the number of units or something? And I also, I'm very respective of the fact that this bidding construction climate is brutal, but I, I just, that number seems unbelievable.
So, it's not the land cost that's necessarily driving that number. This project has to pay prevailing wages, federal prevailing wages, which is higher than state prevailing wages, because of how the financing is being structured for both the market rate piece and the affordable. So, that's a significant contributing factor. And so, I'm not sure, you know, it is higher at this point, this is why I'm saying we have very unique conditions. If I could go back to the chart on page 142, you will see that one of the funding sources that's proposed is, it's called the TOD King County Fund, and that for this project is $10 million. I'm going to try to make a complex story a little bit more straightforward, and show you how we try to deal with it through the conditions. The city of Issaquah actually is helping to put this site together, and the way they are doing it is through a land swap. And the site that's on there now is like a warehouse for
Utilities?
CenturyLink, thank you. And it's a very poor use of a core area site. So, the city's been working for several years with the landowners, they've worked with King County. They are going to move the building for CenturyLink over to another site that's not inside the core, and then make the landowner whole, but they're doing it through building a new building. We have a private market rate developer who's going to be partners with the housing authority, who's going to pay for that building upfront, so it's not a normal land transaction. So, the reason I'm telling you this story is, this is a project we don't expect to see, normally, we would come in next year. But because of the unique land structure, the private partner needs to make sure the public funding commitments are in place. And so, we are doing that. There are a number of factors, looking at cost, it's still relatively early in design, and the total costs are high. The $2 million that's being proposed through the Arch Trust Fund on a per-unit basis is not higher than what we've typically seen, but we do care about costs. So, of that commitment of $2 million, 500 of that is contingent upon them coming back in a year to the executive board, and having to make sure they've done cost engineering and everything they can to make the cost as reasonable as possible. And so, but the private developer, because he has to put the money in upfront to build the new building where the site's going to be relocated, and that's a cash upfront, it's not like usually, you take a piece of land, you pay for it right when you start construction. So, the Compelx web that we have here is, it is relatively early, we know the cost relatively high, we have looked at it, there are some explanations why, and they are offset by, you know, also the King County TOD funds were isolated for that part, there is, their, King County TOD is $80 million. Half of that amount is being set aside into certain areas of the county, and this is one of the areas there was a set aside. The other half is at large, and so anyone can compete. The Issaquah project, the county put the RFP out this year, they're saying, "We want to know where we're going to use the funds." So, that was another thing that made the application need to be put together at this time. They have received the full award for $10 million from King County. So, it's coming together, we thought it was timely to look at it now, we're very cognizant of the cost issues, as you pointed out, and so that's why we added that special condition to say, "We can go up to $2 million if you can justify it, but the last half a million, we want to look at a lot harder before we make a final decision."
Deputy Mayor.
First off, I want to commend you on the ambitious nature.
First off, I want to commend you on the ambitious nature of this document. It's, I like to see, I like the reach that you're making, especially with the affordability crisis that we're facing right now. I just had a small question related to the capital budget, actually. There's a lot of talk about if the capital budget wasn't passed by the 17th, then people were going to lose out on tax credits or ability to use tax credits. We passed the capital budget on the 18th, as you know. Is that affecting, or does that have to be, will there be some sort of follow-up in Olympia to change how the housing, how that works for your purposes?
All the funders are talking.
Okay.
And we have a history of trying to help each other make things land. But even with all that that you heard about, there were enough applications into the state to use up all the 9% tax credits. So there isn't 9% credits being lost.
No.
A high proportion of those units being funded are homeless, which is another, for example, Estera is the 9% project that we have. It's 50% homeless, you know, for the 9% portion. So, but still, even given that, everyone is talking, and in fact, we need to still get creative with Estera to get it over the finish line with credits. So we're all still continuing to work, which gets back a little bit to your point. With Trailhead, no money will be spent in the next year. It's there in its reserve, so it's not like this approval allows them to start spending money and then something can go wrong. The conditions are put in place to make sure that project can keep moving forward. If it stays substantially the same as it is, then we can keep moving forward administratively. If it needs to change significantly in any way, we would have to go back through funding round and come back to you. Okay? So this gives us some level of discretion, but it's bound by the conditions. If anything needs to change more than that, we will be back to every council saying, it's a significant change, so you still want to support it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Just a couple of questions. One is, on some of the portfolio components that have, that are religiously based, either through Catholic community or other entities, do you have kind of policies about participation of residents in any sort of religious services, anything like that? So that's one question. And then the other question is about the relationship of the housing that's built through Arch to supportive services. So in terms of, I noticed that some of them were shelter beds, which is just sort of county-wide a lower priority as opposed to something like permanent supported housing. So what's your relationship between the housing and supportive services in the area?
So we look to the regional entity, All Home slash whenever, for our policies when we're reviewing. You will see that the county is also a funder in all of these projects, and they're not going to move forward without county funding. We are cognizant of needing service dollars, and in fact, the shelter system right now is not full year-round. And we've even got a special condition in here, if you've read them carefully, that says, it's most important that when it's open, it's operating properly. And therefore, if you can't raise enough funds for 12 months of the year, we hope you can. But if not, then we will have a plan before you start that shows you how you will operate with the service dollars that you have available and make sure it's the most effective usage of the building, given service support that's there. We have been funding homeless facilities that have groups that have some somewhat, you know, congregation for the homeless, Sophia Way, they don't have what you were requesting earlier about mandates for any type of participation of people using their facilities. So that has always been the case there with those organizations.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, this is something I think we've asked you before, but I don't recall what the answer is, and it just seems like it's taking more and more of an importance as time goes on. And after reading the front-page article in The Times yesterday, it got me thinking about it, and it was about mobile home parks. And I just want to know, I realize it's a misdirection from where you're focused now and how you do things, but the overall mission is sort of the same, and I was just wondering if you could comment at all about any future changes or roles that Arch may have dealing with mobile home parks?
So I'm so glad you asked that question, because I did want to point out one thing, which is, the Trust Fund is only one thing we do, one of the parts of our work. I will be back here tomorrow night. I have been here at least four or five nights already this year on the conversation around manufactured housing. We sat in on all the individual owners. We went to the community group. We do a lot more work for cities than just the Housing Fund. We helped the cities in their local efforts. We helped you with your strategy plan. We helped you with the rezone question with affordability linked last year. We helped you with the contracts for the MHC, you know, for the property tax exemption across the street. So we're here to full range, and then we monitor all of those contracts that we create over time. So we have, if you look at the list, we have used the Trust Fund to preserve a manufactured housing community in another city. It would not be inconsistent. We don't just do new housing, we do preservation as well. So when you were saying cost-effectiveness and stuff, we will look at all forms, and in fact, we sort of have an informal goal, in addition to getting a balance of types of housing. Many, many years ago, we don't have it as explicit a goal, but we have statements in all our criteria that we are looking to do preservation as well as new. And so we do both. I mean, those are different strategies that cities have supported, and we're here to support your policy. So if cities shift, then we're here to shift with you and sort of help in those areas. So we have been putting a fair amount of work on the planning side. We know we'll be coming back to you to talk about a fuller range of issues related to the manufactured housing communities in your city, and we look forward to helping you in those discussions.
And you probably noticed, on the consent agenda was approval of the Arch work program and budget. Gives you an idea of the different kinds of work that they're doing with all the cities that are members.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you. Thank you very much. Arthur, you were involved in that South Kirkland Park and Ride, weren't you?
Yes, I was almost going to use that as an example of a similar scale.
I love that project.
Thank you.
I mean, you just can't tell where the affordable component is and where the market part is. I just have hope someday with our park and ride that we can do something like that. That's just a great example. All right. So.
Take action on the resolution?
Yes, I'm going to go there now. So we need to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-307 authorizing the duly-appointed Administering Agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter into agreements for the funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board, utilizing funds from the city's Housing Trust Fund.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbin?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'm sorry, I was going to be on the JRC again, you know, to approve funding for these projects, but
You'll be seeing some of that go to them.
No, I can't. I had to give it up.
Oh, you had to give it up.
I was appointed, never attended one meeting, and I had to give it up.
We have you on the regional groups still, though.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is to provide direction for the new sick leave policy provisions for part-time and temporary employees. Ms. Gregory.
In November of 2016, the Washington voters approved a new law. This new law required employers to provide sick leave to employees, all employees beginning January 1st, or basically all employees, beginning January 1st, 2018. And so for Kenmore, this extended sick leave benefits to part-time and temporary workers not previously receiving sick leave benefits, because generally, all of our city regular full-time employees receive a benefit that was more generous than what the Washington paid sick leave law required. And this law applies to hourly or non-exempt employees. And in other words, those employees not exempt from the overtime law. So in reality, professional salaried executive employees are exempt, but right now, basically, all of our employees are receiving the same amount of sick leave benefit. So we have seven employees currently on the payroll who would be affected with this new law, two regular part-time employees, there are a couple folks that work primarily on the weekend. We've got two interns on the payroll who are temporary and would receive benefits, and three part-time temporary workers. So the law did a number of things, but big picture, it said who was eligible and when. It stated a minimum benefit that needed to be provided, stated how the leave could be used and when, and it stated that the use of the leave could not have any adverse employment consequences, and it stated how the sick leave would be treated upon, or could be treated upon separation of employment. So before modifying our current policies and creating new policies where necessary, we felt that direction from the city council would be necessary so that we can modify and create the policies around your direction and make that as efficient as possible. So in this agenda bill, I identified six elements where the city has discretion in applying the terms of the law. And these include how much of an accrual to provide to the employee, how much the employee can carry over from one year to the next, how long an employee must wait before being eligible to use the accrued sick leave, should the city front-load a sick leave bank, should the city pay out any unused sick leave when the employee separates from service, and should these employees be allowed to participate in the city's vacation donation program and receive donations of time off. I also note in the agenda bill, there's a number of other provisions of the law, of the law that apply to other employees, and I'm working to incorporate those into the handbook. But with the direction that I received tonight, I should be able to substantially complete the needed revisions and be able to notify the affected employees as to what their new sick leave benefit will be. And in fact, I believe there's a deadline of March 1st where we need to notify the employees what our policy is going to be. And then the city attorney will be requested to review those policies prior to bringing them back to you, the city council, for approval and final adoption or for further direction if needed. And I hope that we will be able to accomplish this in mid to late February. I'm requesting that we kind of go through this by reviewing the provisions one by one and providing directions.
Yeah, let's act on each one one by one.
Yeah, so if that works for you, that's, that would be my preference, too. Thank you. So before we do that, are there any other questions before we get to the specific?
I think pretty suffix voluntary, so if you want to start with the first one.
Yes, I'll start with the first one. There, it's noted on the first page of the agenda bill, number one. Should the city provide the minimum accrual required by law, which is one hour of sick leave for every hours worked, or provide a more generous accrual than that?
You're recommending a minimum accrual of one hour for every 40 worked.
I am. Yes.
That staff recommendation. Any, Deputy Mayor?
So if I read the paragraph above that correctly, it looks like we give regular employees two hours for every 40 hours worked. Is that correct?
It's 1.845.
Very specific, okay. I, I'm a little, with kind of the grow, with, more and more people are working multiple jobs, or kind of piecing together a living, working a part-time job here, driving an Uber there, kind of piecing things together. I'm uncomfortable kind of, because what the staff recommendation, recommendation says if we were adopted is, on some level, we value your work here a little bit less. And I don't think that's the message I want to send to our temporary employees. I'd be more comfortable if they were accruing at the same rate myself. So that's where I am.
Do you have the demographic of these temporary and part-time employees?
The demographic?
Yeah.
I, well, I've, let's see, mentioned how many we have. So there are two, there are two employees, like I said, that basically work weekends, Friday and Saturday, or Saturday and Sunday. And they're regular employees, they're not temporary, they're on the payroll, and they work about 16 to, not even 20 hours a week. And then we have the interns that we bring in for the summertime that maybe could work as little as three months. If they're local, sometimes that is extended, you know, to nine months or so. And then we have three employees right now who are part-time temporary employees. One is a building inspector, one is, works in the city manager's office, and one works with Public Works.
There's also the summer laborers.
Summer laborers, all the park seasonal, park and street seasonal folks would be subject to this as well.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Danuski?
I would also support part-time workers accruing at the same rate as regular workers.
So is there consensus to support at current levels or staff recommended levels? Let's, let's go at this. No, I think, I don't, I don't have emotions necessary, because there's nothing.
Mayor, may I add something before we go on?
Sure.
Just, just the reasoning for my, my recommendation. So under this, this new law, it's very specific that, or it creates a challenge, a greater challenge for employers to manage sick leave use or abuse if that were to ever occur. You cannot ask for a doctor's note or any kind of input from a doctor until or unless an employee has missed more than three days. And the, the type of reasons that you can take the sick leave are much broader, and you can't have any negative employment consequences for suspected abuse. So even if an employee, so if an employee's got into a situation, and I'm not saying we have any of these now, but, you know, you never know, started taking every Friday off for sick leave, they would never have to provide any documentation or reason for that, and you couldn't question them for that, even if you saw what appeared to be a pattern of abuse. So that's one of the big concerns that, that employers are facing, because you, it's different than the way our policies work now. We have a little bit more ability to manage time off.
So do we have many of these part-time or temporary employees that fall into the 20, 30-hour-a-week category?
Well, we have seven right now who are on the books that are, that would receive sick leave benefits, that don't now.
Right, but how many hours a week are they working?
Um, every, from 16 to 40. There's a couple that are working 16 to 18 hours a week.
So they get one hour if they work 40, or 1.8 hours if they, if they work 40 hours in.
Once they get up to 40 hours,
Right.
they would get something.
They get 1.8 or, or one, or whatever.
You would get one.
So it really would take them quite a while to build up an eight hours to take a Friday.
Anyway, I just wanted to pass that on, that those considerations come into play. But I'm not saying that it's a current problem.
So is there general agreement to support the 1.8?
Thumbs up or what are you doing?
Let's just do thumbs up. Okay.
Okay.
So I think we're generally looking to supporting 1.8.
Same accrual.
Same as for regular staff.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Sure, please.
First, I really appreciate you, your comments, Joanne, because that's the kind of stuff that, I know you, in your role, you have to really understand what each one of these state laws is and how they're impacting us and where the potential abuse can be of these state laws is, and how they're impacting us, and where the potential abuse can be and everything. And so, so I personally appreciate you just being candid about something like that, because that's the kind of stuff that honestly, I don't know enough about it to know how that works. And, and I would also assume, if there was a problem, that you would talk to Rob about it, and we would find out and maybe even change things. So I just assume that, that's kind of goes with probably not even having to say it, but on a lot of these things, if there's issues that they turn out in these new laws that are problems, I would sure hope they'll come back to us to be corrected.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Number two?
Yeah, let's go to number two.
Okay. So the sick leave law says that you can limit, as an employee continues to accumulate sick leave, you can limit the carryover from year to year to forty hours. So a part-time employee might have accumulated, that's been on staff a long time, might have fifty-two hours at the end of the year. The law allows you to say you can only carry over forty to the next year. Now, regular employees on staff now have no limit on their carryovers. My recommendation was to limit the carryover to forty, but your, your direction could also be to not institute a limit on carryovers.
All right. Allow carryover or limit to forty?
Thumbs up again? Are you doing a thumbs up again?
Yeah. I want to make sure there's comments, and people got a chance to address things. But if there's none, all those in favor of limiting at forty, the carryover? To limit?
To the, to the staff.
Right, staff recommendation. So we're looking at thumbs up. All right, all those who are against it, thumbs up. All right, it looks like we have a majority here for limit.
Forty-hour limit.
Yep, staff recommendation.
Okay.
All right, number three.
Number three. The law provides that you can require an employee to wait ninety days before being able to use the accrued sick leave. Doesn't say they can't accrue it, but they'd have to be on staff for ninety days before being able to use it. So you can go with that, or not require a waiting period, or require a different waiting period. We don't have a waiting period now for our employees to be able to use sick leave, and I'm not recommending that, that we start. So, I would, my recommendation was not to require a waiting period.
All right. Any discussion on this? Want to go to staff recommendation and thumbs up? All right, staff recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, number four, front-load.
Front-load. This means provide a sick leave bank upfront that an employee could use. And if you don't provide enough of a sick leave bank based on how much they work, then you've got to catch it up. And if you give them more than what they would have earned under the accrual method, you can't take it back. We don't give employees, even regular full-time or regular employees, a front-loaded sick leave bank now, and I'm not recommending that we start, but that is a decision that you can make.
All right. Front-load or not, staff recommendation is to not front-load. Any discussion on this? Let's see a thumbs up on not front-loading. All right, unanimous.
Okay.
All right.
Number five. And I made an error in my statement on number five that Councilmember Danuski pointed out. So this, this involves separation from employment. Should we pay out any unused sick leave upon separation of employment? Pay it out, pay none out, or pay a portion out upon separation of employment? And what the city's policy is now for regular, full-time employees who separate on good terms, you know, they're not terminated for cause, is to pay out twenty-five percent of the leave bank, sick leave bank, to employees. And there's a really high cap, but that wouldn't apply to part-time people, probably wouldn't get there.
And Joanne reminded me, do we have a waiting period for that, before we're eligible for that cash out?
No.
Okay.
So, and then at retirement, I think the payout is twenty-five percent of the sick leave bank. Anyway, my recommendation is that there not be a payout upon separation of employment for, for these newly eligible employees.
Question? All right, staff recommendation on this one is that unused sick time, temporary and part-time employees not be paid out upon separation for employment. All those in favor of that, raise your thumbs. All right, that's, and those against? Okay, so it's five-one.
To not pay out.
To not pay out, staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number six.
Number six. Okay, so the city does have a, it's a vacation, donation, shared leave program whereby employees can donate vacation time to an employee who has a need and does, or doesn't have enough time to take for a serious illness, or basically enough sick leave. Can't donate, take, donate vacations so somebody can take a vacation, but you can donate your vacation to someone who has a need for sick leave. And the question is, should these newly eligible employees be eligible to participate in that program and receive the sick leave, should they need it? And my recommendation would be to allow that.
And can I add one clarification, Your Honor, on that?
Please.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that sick leave is donated at an hourly rate value. So for example, let's say somebody's making fifteen dollars an hour, and somebody wants, somebody who's making thirty dollars an hour wants to donate. That would translate in two hours of sick leave for every one hour donated by the higher-paid employee, correct?
Correct.
So just something for you to keep in mind when you're thinking about this. So if, so for example, you could have a department head that makes quite a bit more than a summer parks worker, and that department head could donate pound for pound, dollar for dollar, quite a bit more than what they have in their bank to the receiving employee.
Correct.
Deputy Mayor.
Quick question on this. So, does our current policy only allow people to donate vacation to cover other people's sick?
Yes.
Sick needs? That's interesting. Is that, is that normal? Because where I work, we can donate sick leave once we've gotten above some threshold, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred hours, I can't remember what it is, but if somebody has a long-term illness, or their spouse is undergoing something, we can donate sick, but we can't donate vacation. And I think that makes more sense, frankly, to be able to donate sick to somebody else rather than donating your vacation time, but is that, is that normal practice?
Normal? I don't, I don't know if I.
Sorry, I mean to put you on the spot, this just jumped out at me as being kind of.
It's just been our practice for many, many years.
Huh.
I know people are more hesitant to donate vacation than they are sick leave, but we've not gone there yet to allow sick leave donation.
Have we had many shared, shared leave opportunities come up in the city? Have we had people who need to take advantage of that?
Have we? Yes. Yes, yes, we have.
This might be a discussion I want to circle back to at a later time.
Okay.
We're not talking about temporary stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not set in stone, it's certainly, you know, at your discretion to address that, too.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so, question then is to follow staff recommendation on the temporary and part-time employees could be allowed to participate in the city's vacation donation, shared leave program, and they may receive donations from other employees in defined circumstances. Any discussion on this? Thumbs up? All right, unanimous. All right, now, you got a couple of others that imply, or you want to talk about those, or we can read them, or have read them?
Well, it's just a reminder that, you know, there are some other provisions in this law that we don't have discretion over. It expands the definition for authorized use of sick leave to things be, such as, if the, if the city were closed due to health reasons, or your child's school was closed due to health reasons, that is an appropriate use of sick leave. And then of course, there are domestic violence and stalking laws that say, you know, you can take sick leave to deal with those issues. The definition of family members that you can take sick leave to care for is greatly expanded. Rate of pay, well, rate of pay is rate of pay, there's no really consideration there. We pay sick leave at whatever the hourly rate is, and that's been our practice. We allow employees to take leave in increments of half-hours. We're not going to make it any different for, for any group of employees. There is a provision that said if a rehire leaves and does not get any cash out, but come, or employee leaves, doesn't get a cash out, and then, but has a bank, and comes back within twelve months, they get their bank back. That's the law, so we would, we would definitely do that. Retaliation for lawful use of sick leave is prohibited, and you can only require verification for absences once they exceed three days, and that's in our policies now.
Okay.
So what I plan to do is try to build this all into a cohesive policy, and bring that back to you for your review and approval.
Great.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith.
On the, on the rehire thing, so if, if it was a full-time employee, I realize this isn't dealing with the full-time here, but if a full-time employee left and they got cashed out on their sick leave, and then they came back within the twelve months, then we just, it's, it's washed out, though. There's nothing to, that you have to backload.
If you're cashed out, yes, there's nothing when you come back.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got direction, right?
Yes.
Wonderful. Staff report, city manager.
Yeah, well, I'd like to thank Joanne Gregory for wearing multiple hats. She's finance director, she's HR director, she's IT director, and risk manager, among other things. So thank you, Joanne, for your wearing your HR hat tonight, appreciate that. And I also want to applaud Brian for bringing forth that code regarding long plat approval. It was good, good discussion. Brian's all about efficiency, and I appreciate that in him, so thanks for bringing that forward, Brian. And I just learned about a bill in Olympia, Mayor and I were exchanging emails about it. So I've always been dreading the day when we hit twenty-five thousand population. Does anybody know why?
Yep.
Highway 522, that's when we become responsible for the asphalt.
With no money.
With no money to go with it, unfunded mandate.
And the signals, right?
Yeah. Yep. And, yeah, that's a good point. Now, there's, there are benefits. You have a little more control over, like, we can have more say in the speed limit, for example. I think that's the only thing I can think of. Anyway.
It spends a lot more money.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a House bill, I believe, twenty-nine and something, that would move that threshold up to, yeah, twenty, twenty-nine forty-eight, House Bill twenty-nine forty-eight, that would remove that threshold up to thirty-five thousand. My inclination is to support it if nobody objects. Okay, AWC supports it, we'll, we'll weigh in and support it, so.
I was down in Olympia today, and I got a text from Nigel about nine o'clock or so in the morning. Said you're going to like this with a copy of the bill, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll weigh in.
He spotted it, so, it was, it was a good one.
That's it.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
All right, let's go back the old way tonight. Comments, initiatives, reports. Councilmember Smith.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
I wonder, given that the city manager had mentioned at the retreat that he thought there was a, I guess, a plausible or a good shot that the state would accept, or would be at least someone enthused at a St. Edward's Ball Field proposal without lights, if it's time for a non-action agenda item, perhaps at the next meeting or so, as to a St. Edward's update for the public, so that they can be appraised to that new information and our new sense of what it might look like without lights, or any other updates?
Are we there? There's not much we know more because of the SEPA process here and the process of answering, right?
We're going.
Time for an update?
City staff are, and consultants are in the process of responding to all the comments, and it's quite a task and taking quite a bit of time. We anticipate that we'll be ready to respond to those comments and have all of our, all of our responses ready probably the next week or two. We plan on sitting down with state parks and going over all those responses with them, and so, giving them time to read them, and then setting a meeting. We're probably a month out from there. So, whenever you guys want us to come and give you an update and talk to you about it, we're happy to do so. One thought is, we come and give you an update after we've had a chance to talk to state parks, but again, that's probably four to six weeks away from now. That's my guess.
So would there be anything new to report?
Yes, we could talk about staff's, both state parks and city staff's progress, if any, on coming to agreement on certain items, certain features of the park, with lighting being the most prominent.
Danuski?
I think the.
Oh, wait a minute, let's, let's go back. Get an answer for Councilmember Marshall here. So, you want something then, within what timeframe would you like to see?
You know, I suppose the, the next council meeting or one thereafter, seems a fairly short, whatever is feasible for a short timeframe, an update.
So can we do a short update?
Yes, of course.
Okay, wonderful.
Put it on the business agenda?
Business agenda.
I hadn't anticipated that for business agenda, but I will defer to anybody else's thoughts. My main question is whether it was that exploration and public input as to lights, and whether that could be used for any global solution, or working towards that. So I don't know whether that would require a business agenda, or should require a business agenda or not.
Can we do it at staff report at the end?
If, if it's an update, it feels more like a staff report.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, fine. Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I was just going to say that until we get through the SEPA process, I don't really want to have a conversation on if we want to include lights or not include lights. I want to get through that, so it may be just a little early to bring in that part back to us.
That answer, Councilmember Marshall?
It definitely gave me Councilwoman Danuski's opinion, for sure. I don't know how the.
No, I mean, it's a staff response, and that, about holding it there at the next meeting, after the next meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay, fine.
So February 12th, then?
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I went to the planning commission meeting last week, and it was very informative to listen to all of the owners of the mobile home parks, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting, listening to the homeowners in those parks. It was interesting from the park owner's perspective, fairly differing opinions about the acceptability of the various scenarios, but at least a few of them found the percentage of affordable units proposal to be acceptable, which was nice to hear, that at least there was some traction there. And it was, it was just interesting how different, the, the fairly different perspectives of the different owners. They are certainly, each one is unique, and it also kind of underscored that fact that we might want to treat the different parks differently, or at least the parks in different regions of the city.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add?
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to add.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
I know I didn't have any, but.
I know I didn't have any, but Councilmember Shrubnik reminded me, I wanted to know, and since some of you have different levels of involvement in it, you may know the answer to this, and that, and it has to do with on the mobile park, or mobile home parks. The, the ones where the people buy their homes, and I'm not talking about the people that are renting, where maybe the park owns all the units, but those that actually buy the homes, do you happen to know if there's any type of a disclosure requirement or anything at the time they purchase a home like that? And, because I've, I've really been thinking a lot about this, and, and it really relates very close to my work and some of the things I've even done with mobile home parks through the years. And I'm not aware of one, but I just wanted to know if any, if you or Nigel, since he's kind of in touch down there, if you've ever heard of anything like that? Because if I look at really the root problem for one of the issues, and it's a significant one, and it's when somebody pays $40,000 for a home, that maybe they lose a lease in five years and they can't move it. And it, it just seems like it's not adequately disclosed very likely. I don't know that, but I was just, I, I'm going to actually look some, I've got some ways I can do some research on it, but I wanted to throw that out there if anybody else knew that.
And I'm not aware of any disclosures like that. I mean, they're, they're, they could exist, I honestly don't know. What I do know is they're given, you know, if the park's being sold, they're going to have to vacate, they're given, I believe, 12 months.
Right.
And that might be expanding with some stuff that's going on in Olympia right now, but I believe right now they just have 12 months to figure out where they're going to find $30,000 to move their house.
Yeah.
Because my understanding is it can run in to, run up to about $30,000, depending on the size of the house and how far they're moving it, so.
Yeah, and I was looking at, like, maybe there was a state law that actually addressed something like that on the buyer's side that I didn't know of, but anyway.
You're probably the best equipped of all of us to find that out.
Pardon?
You're probably the best equipped of all of us to find that out.
Well, and I will. I will, I thought I would start here, though, before I, because I thought maybe there's something that exists already.
No, and if you find out, I'd love to hear the answer. So, one of the committees I'm now on is the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Committee. So there's a lot of stuff going out there, and we're projecting an additional 4 million people in the greater metropolitan area by 2040, and an additional 5.8 more than that by 2050. And we're looking at a projected 4.2 million by 2020. So this region is growing and will continue, and there's projected jobs of it, 2.2 million in, in 2020. And those projections have actually been very consistent with the originals made back in 1980. So they've been kind of right on on that one. Met with legislators today, I met with our legislators today, Senator Frock and Representative Palet and Representative Valdez, and we stressed two issues. One was the 520, to underpass, overpass, that things going to allow the city, that residents to move around the city a little bit better as things continue to develop. And everybody realized, or admits it's going to be a hard lift, that this is something not going to happen in this session, but it's good to start people thinking about it. We're also looking, Rob, I don't know if you have had a chance to talk with Brianna yet, but there's the possibility of combining forces with Lake Forest Park on this one, because they're doing the same, they're looking for an overpass, too, but they're looking for pedestrian bike overpass, but the thing, traffic is traffic, and we're only talking a few blocks apart. So maybe we could use the same consulting firm to do the study, I don't know. But anyway, we're looking to, to do something jointly to try to make it easier for the legislature to approve it because there's two cities involved instead of one. So that's one of the things that we discussed today. And then the other was some economic development tools or some tools that will allow us to take advantage of tax advantages or, or some sort of tools that allow a lake point to happen because of the extraordinary cost, because it is an I-5 landfill of the state, and there was a number of good points raised today that, since the state caused this, that maybe we should go to the state and bring action or something. So it remains to be seen, but there's a number of ideas out on the table. Also had a great conversation with Senator Frock, was mystified by State Parks, their inability to, to look at some of the, some of the facts and some of the roadblocks that keep appearing. So Senator Frock is pretty frustrated by this, so I just thought I would pass that on in relation to the ball fields. And Ken Moore in funding is on the Sound Transit Agenda for the 23rd. I haven't seen the agenda yet, but it is on the agenda for the 23rd. So if anybody wants to come down and have a few comments and join our city manager in waving the flag, it would be greatly appreciated. Be good to have some of those yellow shirts back in the audience. We still have them, so we can distribute them. So anyway.
That would be fun to show up in one of those.
That would, wouldn't it? Okay, I could, I could show up in one. I might get in trouble for that. Anyway, if there's no, oh, next, no meeting on Monday, February 5th. Next meetings are February 12th and February 26th, both regular council meetings. So it looks like there's another break in between there because there's more than seven days between 12 and 26th, so. With that, if there's no further business, we are adjourned.